Mr. Mayor, it is now six P M.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. Before we get started, I'd like to take a point of privilege and to just thank Councilwoman Ral, Councilwoman Willis, uh, Councilwoman Gums, Councilmember Reeves, and Councilmember Baker for reaching out to me on yesterday. And your words were very encouraging from all of you, from me and my family. I'd just like to report everything is fine now, and thank you so much for for having that sort of concern. Uh, I'll call to me the City of South Fulton, Georgia Virtual F Y twenty twenty two Budget Public Hearing Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one, it says, five. Mr. Clerk, would you, uh, call the roll group?
Yes, roll call. The Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor. The Honorable Catherine F. Ral, District One. The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gilyard, District Four. I believe she's coming into the meeting now. Uh, the Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accounted for.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District Six. And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gilyard, District Four.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have a quarrel.
Next item, please. This is a public hearing, right?
That's correct. We have a presentation, uh, public hearing, and then the presentation of the ordinance.
Let's hear from staff.
Okay, I'll read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget for each fund of the City of South Fulton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts showing in each fund as expenditures, expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available and for other lawful purposes.
Okay.
Miss, Miss Caldwell, there we go. Miss Rachel Bembry, Interim Finance Director, will make the presentation.
Ms. Bembry, go right ahead.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome citizens to the second and final public hearing for the fiscal year twenty two budget. I'll provide an overview of the fiscal year twenty two proposed budget and look forward to any questions. As a reminder, the city conducted detailed revenue and department presentations on August seventeenth and nineteenth, and I encourage those who missed it or are looking for additional details to start there for some good information. Additionally, the full proposed budget is available on the city's website. Um, and Mrs. Jones also prepared and distributed a memo to Mayor and Council, providing responses to requests and questions, and we will discuss this during this presentation. Um, similar to how we started the millage presentation, uh, with property tax one oh one, we will start here with a quick budget one oh one. The official code of Georgia requires each municipality to adopt and operate an annual balance budget for the general fund, each special revenue fund, and each debt service fund, as well as a project-linked budget for each capital projects fund. Furthermore, each municipality is required to notify the public of the proposed budget available for repeat review and conduct a public hearing at least one week prior to adoption. Uh, finally, for amendments, any increase in appropriation at the legal level of control, which is the department level, whether accomplished through a change in anticipated revenues in any fund or through a transfer of appropriations among departments, requires approval of the governing authority. The city's fiscal year twenty two proposed budget for all funds is just under one hundred and twenty five million. It is comprised of thirteen funds, with the city's main operating fund accounting for about ninety one and a half million, or seventy three percent of the city's total budget. The fiscal year twenty two proposed budget includes two new funds and four new departments. The new funds are Wolf Creek and Stormwater, both of which are enterprise or business-type funds. Next slide. In looking at the general fund revenue budget for fiscal year twenty two, you will note property taxes account for the largest revenue stream for the city at about thirty three and a half million, or thirty seven percent of total revenues. As a reminder, the city adopted to keep the same millage rate as in prior year of twelve point eight nine nine mils. The second-largest revenue stream is lost or local option sales tax at twenty two million, or twenty four percent of the total. And the city is fairly diversified in other revenue streams, with no other one stream accounting for more than ten percent of the total. Next slide. Uh, this will, um, present the revenue budget in terms of a comparison to the prior-year amended budget and prior-year actuals. Uh, the property taxes category includes real and personal property taxes at the adopted rate and a ninety eight percent collection rate. Other property taxes are included here, such as real estate intangible and real estate transfer taxes. Uh, for fiscal year twenty two, we are projecting increases in most revenue categories. Um, this is primarily attributable to general increases in revenue-driving activities, but also some increases relative to bring a Fulton Industrial Boulevard, or F I B. The decrease in intergovernmental revenue, um, is significant, and it reflects the removal of the revenue from the intergovernmental agreement with the county for F I B. Also, other revenue decreased due to the CARES funding received in fiscal year twenty one and the budgeted use of reserves increased from prior year, which funds the fiscal year twenty two capital budget. Um, this slide was added, you know, based on comments from our first budget hearing, and it reflects the breakdown of the assessed values in the city by category. The residential properties account for about seventy eight percent, while commercial is seventeen percent, and industrial is about four percent. Agricultural and conservation use are are very minimal, at less than one percent. Next slide, please. Now let's take a look at general fund expenditures. Uh, as you know, the human capital or personnel of any city is its largest expenditure. The fiscal year twenty two proposed budget provides for six hundred and thirty six employees, of which six hundred and ten are full-time and twenty six are part-time or seasonal. Personnel costs increased approximately twenty two percent over prior year's budget, and part of this is attributable to new positions, but also the budget provides for a three percent increase to employees at mid-year, as well as an eleven point six percent increase in health insurance premiums. When you take these two variables out, the city is actually only budgeting a sixteen percent growth in position count. Again, I encourage citizens to review the department presentations for additional details on, um, personnel. Uh, I think it's really important to note that, um, operational expenditures are budgeted, um, to increase only two percent over the prior year's budget. Uh, and we'll talk about capital and departmental, uh, non-departmental expenditures such as transfers, uh, in the upcoming slides. Uh, this slide you see here is the department budgets and the percentage of the total general fund expenditures it accounted for. Um, as expected, the city's largest departments are police and fire, followed by public works. This is where I would like to highlight the changes in the fiscal year twenty two proposed budget from the origi- original document publication that was presented for council and public review. Um, those items can be summarized in three categories, or three departments, rather. And the Human Resources Department, an additional appropriation of three thousand dollars was included for a change in the current E A P provider. Additionally, the two payroll positions were transferred from the Finance Department to Human Resources, which is a lateral move. Uh, in Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs, we increased the grounds maintenance worker position count from ten to twelve to correct an error, and we also returned the part-time aquatics instructor position to a full-time position for a total of two. And finally, we corrected an error, um, on where the debt service was budgeted, uh, for some of the fiscal year twenty two capital projects, or purchases, rather. Uh, this moved debt service, um, of thirty two thousand five hundred from Parks and Cultural Affairs to Community Development and Code Enforcement. Those are the changes that have taken place, uh, since our original publication. The next slide. Um, here we have the non-departmental expenditures, including transfers that support the activity of other funds. It's worth noting that the transfer to blighted properties increased from two hundred thousand in prior year, and the E nine one one transfer is relatively flat compared to prior year, while the D D A transfer proposed is a hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty two. The one million dollar transfer to the grants fund represents the grant match contingency. The transfers to the U R A fund are to make debt service payments for principal and interest on the U R A debt. And there are also transfers to support the Stormwater M S four fund and a non-departmental contingency budget. Next slide, please. Uh, the fiscal year, uh, fiscal year twenty two proposed budget, uh, provides for a significant capital investment of just over fourteen million dollars. Of this amount, about one point six million is in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and four hundred and fifty thousand in grants representing a match from the grant contingency. Finally, the remaining capital investment is funded through a general fund debt and reserves. This follows the best practice of matching one-time sources with one-time uses. Next slide. Um, this is just a different way to look at your capital expenditures. This slide just shows a breakdown of the fiscal year twenty two proposed capital investment across, uh, departments. Next slide. Um, it is critical to examine fund balance, specifically unassigned fund balance in the general fund, excuse me. As part of the budget process, we have considered the Government Finance Officers Association recommendation to maintain at least three months or twenty five percent of unassigned fund balance, while the City of South Fulton's municipal fund balance ordinance calls for two and a half months or twenty point eight percent of unassigned fund balance. The fiscal year twenty two proposed budget provides for four months, or thirty three point three percent of unassigned fund balance. Um, as stated previously during the pandemic and future uncertainty, um, this is appropriately conservative. Uh, next line, if you go, thank you. Uh, to close out, uh, this slide shows the total citywide fiscal year twenty two budget, um, of which the general fund reflects the largest fund budget, followed by the local, local capital projects fund. This concludes my presentation. I'll, um, happily take any questions, and then hopefully we'll move on to adoption.
Let me first, uh, open the public hearing, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, we've received three, uh, public comments, uh, for the F Y twenty two budget. Uh, we did receive one live, uh, the comment where a person wants to, uh, enter their comment on record. Uh, when I say your name, please state your name, your address, and your district, and you will have two minutes to make your public comment. Uh, Ms. Angela James, will you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, I've unmuted myself. Um, my name is Angela James. I live in Regency Oak Subdivision, thirty three oh five Arbor Run Place, three zero three four nine.
You have two minutes to make your statement.
Okay, so my first question is, um, we have a lot of development happening in our city. Can we budget to properly staff the zoning department and hire quality people? And second part to that is that we need great planners and even better inspectors. We know that these builders that are coming to our side of town typically have different types of plans, which are subpar quality in my, um, perspective, and how do we work towards getting better, um, builders and that type of thing to our area?
Okay, does that conclude your statement, or?
No, that's just my first question. So you just want to run through all of them?
Yes, yes, uh, the, uh, please state all your questions, and, uh, the mayor and council will receive them.
Okay, so the, um, second question is, I like the town center idea, of course, but here over by Enon and Merk Road. How much is the budget for this upcoming year to make it closer to reality? And do we know how much it will cost to maintain those museums? And, you know, museums are typically a drain. How do we rethink at least one of those and focus on smart technology in our city? So we can lure, you know, some of those smart companies like the Apples and the Microsofts to this area. Um, my next question is, how much additional money are we getting now that we have, um, incorporated Fulton Industrial Boulevard to the area? And the last question is, is how much revenue are we missing on not ticketing these big trucks that are driving through our communities? Um, what we know for sure is that we seem that we can't stop what's happening in Union City with all these different warehouses. But how do we get more, um, presence in ticketing these big trucks that are driving through our communities every single day that I see them? Early in the morning, late in the afternoon, they just seem to be all over our roads. So that's it. Just need some answers.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. James. I'm going to go through the rest of the comments, and, uh, your comments will be provided in writing to the mayor and council as well. Mr. Mayor and Council, the next comment comes from Kendra Owens, who lives on Harrier Lane in District Three. She states, let me start by saying thank you for the work each of you do. Public Works, watching the budget videos over the weekend, Ms. Willis asked the city starting to do public works itself. Mayor Edwards said in the past it was cheaper for the city to use a private company. We always compare ourselves to the northern cities, and they still have private companies. Public Works is the third-largest expense of the city, according to the finance director's presentation. Has a study been done on how much it costs to do it ourselves or to keep using a private company? If so, what is the cost of of the city to start and maintain it and for us to get better service than the county gave us because that was bad? Communications, my grandmother lives in the community, and many times she does not know what is happening in the city, absent me sharing. Please allocate some funding to making sure our elderly population receive information. The city could also consider offering classes to our seniors on how to access the internet and email. Over time, it would pay off with less printed copies having to be mailed. Parks and Recreation, I feel like the county screwed us over with maintaining our parks, and it is getting better. Please make sure we are adequately, make sure we adequately fund park expansion of services. Thank you so much for all the work you do in our city. End of comment. The last comment is from Ms. Shanita Hall, who lives on Red Sage Ridge in District Three. She states, many thanks to all parties involved in helping to set the upcoming budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two for the City of South Fulton. I appreciate everyone's efforts in helping our city to become better and greater each and every day. In terms of the twenty twenty two budget, I would like to ask both the mayor and all council members to consider and think more strategically about increasing the revenue stream of Wolf Creek Amphitheater so that it can become a more viable cash flow stream to help achieve many of the goals that the city has to both improve and maintain our city. I realize with COVID nineteen, there have been many obstacles in terms of hosting events, among other challenges our city has faced in the past, and also currently as it relates to Wolf Creek Amphitheater, but I believe that we can overcome all challenges. One of the things that I would like to ask is for Mayor Edwards and city council members and others to consider allocating funds for improvement of Wolf Creek Amphitheater and the surrounding areas impacted by the facility. For example, many patrons prior to the pandemic had stopped attending events at Wolf Creek Amphitheater because it lacks an awning, whereas many of the competing amphitheaters that host similar events such as Mabel, Mabel House Amphitheater in Cobb County, and Ameris Bank Amphitheater in Alpharetta, and others provide such experience for their patrons. South Fulton needs to be able to compete with such experiences. In other, in order to increase revenue for the venue and posit- and positively impact our bottom line, we must invest in offering a similar experience, knowing that the general public has options where to spend their funds for entertainment. Therefore, I would like to ask that you all address this need and concern, if possible, during the F Y twenty two budget review process and consider making Wolf Creek Amphitheater a Class A venue similar to Mabel House. Uh, she also has currently, most of the overflow foot traffic when events are held are patrons walking in the street in the surrounding residential areas, which does not make for a safe environment for everyone. I would also like to ask that you budget to pave and provide proper lighting for the overflow parking area near the venue, given that all patrons are unable to fit in the existing parking lots on the premises. The nearby parking is unpaid, have no sidewalk access, and have improper lighting for patrons attending such events. The goal will be to improve the overall experience for those attending events at Wolf Creek. It is my hope that you all will work towards making the necessary provisions and create a budget to help improve Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Hopefully, the consulting firm that was hired for the town center and city hall can also be contracted to do a study on improvements for the amphitheater, as well as this too can be in the budget. I think this would really help revenues and bring our amphitheater to greater heights and provide neighboring s- city a very positive experience we all can enjoy. Many thanks to you all again. Keep up the great work that you are doing. Please do give my request great thought and strong consideration. Best regards, Ms. Hall. That completes the public comment.
Thank you so much, all of you who have given us public comment. I'm going to, uh, close the public hearing now. Uh, Ms. Willis, I see you in the queue.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me, Chair. Um, Ms. Bembry, do you know when the reevaluation of our local option sales tax will be? Uh, since we have, um, since the, uh, twenty twenty census is completed, and we're now projected to be at a hundred and seven thousand dollars? I mean, I'm sorry, not a hundred and seven thousand dollars, excuse me, a hundred and seven thousand in population.
Yes, and there is a little bit of a lag between, uh, when those census numbers come out. Um, so we should see them in the next, uh, fiscal, uh, year budget cycle, so fiscal year twenty three.
Right, so I know that typically, um, I think it's every seven years, and it's typically done after the census count. Um, the municipalities in Fulton County get together, and, uh, they have meetings, and they go through the reevaluation, um, process of local option sales tax. So our allocation should be higher, because this, it was based on, uh, I mean, it's a, it's a, um, it's a factor, not a factor, it's a, uh, yeah, it's a factor with several components in it, but I know that population is one. And, uh, we were, our local options tax was based on, uh, the twenty ten census, which was, which had us at eighty eight thousand people. Um, and so, have you heard anything about when we go through that evaluation process? And Mayor, you may be able to speak more to this as well, being that you were, um, the last time this happened was when, um, we were still associated with the county.
Right.
And if I may, um, I'm, and I apologize, when I initially heard your question, I was thinking, um, entrance premium tax, and, uh, we were advised by the entrance, uh, commissioner that there would be a, a year lag in the, in the fiscal year of impact that we would see, uh, the, um, revaluation in terms of entrance premium tax due to the census, so forgive me for that. Um, I have not have any communications, um, in terms of the revaluation for loss with the municipalities in Fulton County.
Uh, uh, Mayor Procham, I think that, uh, you're absolutely correct. Uh, I think that it is, it is based on population. I can't remember, uh, this was, well, it's the exact date, time that we did it, but I will go back and research it and get that for you.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Sally Jones, can you take, thank you, Mayor, um, um, but I also want Ms. Sally Jones to take the onus to get this done, um, on behalf of our city, to find out when that process starts. It's my understanding that this process is supposed to take place every seven years. And it's typically done after the cycle of the census.
Okay, I can reach out to the county.
Yeah, she's correct on that part.
Okay, so the second question I have, this is probably for Ms. Sally Jones. Is there a reason, um, you know, I, I did call around to, uh, some department heads, uh, before we adopt this final budget to see if it was anything that we were missing. And one of the things that I was concerned about is that, uh, there was money taken away for our retreat, which we desperately need. Uh, is there a reason why that was done, Ms. Sally Jones?
To balance the budget, um, we had a, at that time, a two hundred, no, a two million dollar gap. And so we went to all of the departments and went through their budgets to look at things that we could remove in order to balance the budget, and that was one of the items. However, um, you know, we can still use contingency or or other resources. Of course, I would be referring to Ms. Bembry on the best place to do that, but we just felt like at that particular time, that was the item out of the operating budget for the city clerk that we needed to remove. Um, we can, um, you know, definitely go back and look at that. You know, I, I know we had talked about doing a retreat, uh, after the elections.
Ms. Ms. Sally Jones, I, I am going to give a little pushback on that, because we will, uh, more than likely have a new council. Uh, when I say new council, we would prop, have approximately, um, uh, at least two to three, uh, new persons on this council, um, at least two people on this council. And, um, that retreat is, is very important for us to, uh, try to come into sync as a unified, um, as, as, as a unified government. And so I, I do not recommend taking that out. Uh, yes.
Can I just say something real quick? I think that the proper thing for us to do at this, at this juncture is to request of Ms. Ms. Bembry, uh, to look into our contingency fund, uh, so that we can, we can defray the cost of, of having that retreat. I agree with you, we do need one. And Ms. Rachel, I would just ask that you look into the contingency to defray that cost.
Um, yes, sir, we can certainly do that, and I would like to clarify, um, something. It was not removed entirely. Um, I'll have to look at the exact numbers, but it was just reduced to be more cost-effective. There are a lot of meeting spaces that are available in the area that would be free of charge, rather than renting or leasing a space that would be of cost to the city. So we felt like there was, um, some suggestions for some more frugal ways to hold the same level of retreat, just maybe in a venue that was more cost-effective.
I would ask that you, uh, uh, take the mayor's suggestion.
Received.
I mean, we, yes, ma'am, we can, we can do that. We will do that.
I think that's the most prudent way to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, are you finished, uh, Mayor Procham?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Khalid, you're next. Okay, uh, Mr. Kame, you're next.
I'm sorry, it always takes me a while to get myself mic'd up. Um, my first question is for Ms. Bembry. I've got a couple. I'll try and get through them and maybe I can come back. The uh, presentation that you showed today, is that the most detailed presentation? Is there another? I know the budget book will drill a little bit further down into the numbers. Is there something like that somewhere else?
Um, certainly, the budget book gives line item details, um, that's, I mean, other than transactions themselves, the, the line item is, is the budgeted line item. Um, the budget book provides that, that detail.
I got you, because I mean, we're, you know, we don't have that now. We're, we're voting, this is the final meeting, so we're going to vote to pass this budget.
No, it has been provided at every point in this process. Um, it was provided, uh, just after the department presentations, um, it was updated and reposted, uh, since the first public hearing, so it and it was actually distributed through email. I do believe the clerk may be able to confirm, um, to mayor and council.
But that, that was my question. I know we got it, but it, it is online somewhere. Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was asking, I'm sorry. Um, and, and when will the final one be ready?
Um, yes, it'll take us, um, about two to anywhere from two to four weeks, I would say, to pull all of the components. We know the final budget book does come, um, with some additional components because we do want to apply for the um, budgeting award from the Government Finance Officers Association. So we'll, we'll take a little bit of time to gather some, you know, high-quality images and, uh, some additional inserts regarding policies and things of that nature. So it will take approximately two to four weeks to put out that final, uh, uh, budget book.
Okay, um, just thinking where I want to go next. Okay, uh, I love the diversifying budget. Uh, our, our diversifying income streams. Other than, I mean, I know we get, we're getting a bunch new from the cameras, but like where, where else are we getting that? That these growing, these growing streams from and how likely is that to continue?
Um, well, there, there are a lot of components to, um, the revenue streams. Uh, it really kind of depends on which revenue stream you're looking at. Obviously, from proper tax perspective, um, you know, home values play a large part in that as well as, you know, looking at the tax breakdown. Um, some properties produce um, higher revenue streams than other, uh, property classifications. Um, so that's from a property tax perspective. Um, you know, from a franchise fee perspective, you know, that's related to our, you know, usage of those right-of-ways. So all of those things have different driving activity. Um, I don't see anything, um, and just in general to respond to your question, I don't see anything that alarms me that this trend won't continue. Now, I can assure you it won't continue at the same pace because we are considering the influx from FIB and even next year, when those property tax values come on board, you'll see an influx from FIB. And then I would anticipate, uh, it to kind of level out a little bit. Um, but I don't see anything that indicates that, uh, you will see, you know, a halt in, in just general growth.
Awesome, yeah, I, um, I was thinking specifically of, I know that we got more increased revenues from like permits. I know that a ton of people applied for permits because it was connected to PPP funding and people starting businesses during the pandemic and yeah, I, you know, you want to speak to that or?
Yeah, I do anticipate that kind of growth to continue. Um, I think that as, also as we see, um, you know, these recreational programs and some of those things start to open up over the next fiscal year, we will also see increases in charges for services in those areas. And it'll be important to, you know, just continually reevaluate our fee schedules and ensure we are properly aligned to um, you know, to en- enjoy that growth.
Okay, and, um, uh, one, uh, one of the people, uh, on the, the call, I do want to kind of respond to some of the things that, that questions that people ask, um, because they're also my questions. But, uh, the Public Works budget is, is nearly twelve percent or like twelve million, um, last year, our, our expenditures, I, I should say. How much of that is what we're paying Jacobs? Versus, you know, I, I know we have a couple of people in-house and we're starting to bring things online, but how much are we paying, did we pay Jacobs in, in total?
I, so, I have that information readily available. I don't know if Antonio was on the call and may or may not have that information readily available. Um, I do believe it's, I don't want to misspeak, um, so I would definitely want to defer, I can get the number for you.
Oh, I mean, it's okay.
Is on the line, is he on the? Go ahead, Ms. Bembry.
I'll, I'll keep going if he, if he hops on, um, the I, I, I think, uh, Ms. Angela James made a really good point about us, um, attracting like high-tech employers and I, I think that you know, through the things that we're doing with our DA and our DDA, if we are buying, uh, commercial revenue generating things, not like government buildings, but developing some of the things that, that we need to have built that developers don't seem willing to build us, uh, is, is going to be really important and um, that's how we're going to create the sort of housing and play areas, because those companies that she talked about, they're all moving into in-town Atlanta. And I know a lot of, I know, um, there were some people on the, in the comprehensive fee, but fee the comprehensive plan feedback session that weren't interested in building up on national, right? But like, those are, those are the kinds of places where those workers are now moving. That's why you see all the cranes. Um, in, in places like Atlanta and in cities around the perimeter, so hopefully, our, our development some of their funds that our parks will focus some of their funds that, um, that they're giving on. I know that we had a conversation about, um, not using a lot of the ARP funding for our schools. But the other thing that we know employers look at is the performance of our schools. And if and if we think that the county is not doing a sufficient amount to, to, to improve that performance, we can use programs in our parks to do that. Um, shout out to Mr. Leftwich for the, uh, the where your money goes, because I, I was looking through the budget pages and I just, I think that that is that is awesome. So the entire communications department, thank you for that. I do have a question for you though, and that is the um, uh, one gentleman asked about getting more information out to our seniors through, uh, new well, he said through mail. I, I think he was saying seniors don't do things online. I know I've asked every year about a newsletter. Is there enough money in your budget this year to produce a quarterly newsletter?
Uh, based on past mailers and of course postage is the main cost here, there is not.
Okay, um, maybe that's something that we can look at in the mid-year budget review. I'm not, I'm not going to like hold up the budget for that, although I really do want us to have it. I've been asking for it for a long time. And my last question is for our city attorney and for Ms. Bembry. And that is, and I, and I've said this a couple of times, how much money have we spent on setting up our city's new legal department?
I, I, as I mentioned in my email, I, you know, it does take some time to pull that data. I am fairly new to the city. I did not know the date at which legal came on board, so I've got a little, do a little bit of research, a little bit of digging to make sure I understand all of the expenditures involved and calculate it accurately to provide you information. So I do respectfully request to to take the time to, um, understand the expenditures and the situation and properly and accurately provide you a response.
Okay, that's a, that, that makes this budget a no for me because that, um, we were told in twenty-twenty that it would cost about the same that we were already paying, which was six hundred and seventy-two thousand. And I'm looking at numbers of well over a million, maybe two million, based on the fact that we are still paying two attorney to, uh, two firms, basically our internal firm and a, and an external firm. Uh, we did not fire that person, they are still getting paid and their, their lawyers are still getting paid. And it looks like we're spending a lot of money. We're spending way more than we thought we were.
Yes, sir, I just want to mention that the legal budget does include a half a million dollars in a, in a contingency for legal. Um, so I would, uh, would advise that we kind of, you know, when doing the comparison, you would generally take that out. It's not an expenditure directly to the department, so that may mislead the numbers as well, but we can certainly look at that, um, analysis as you requested.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bembry, let, before I go to the next person, just let me just say something. Um, over my twenty years, the question has always been asked. Who the hell votes against a balanced budget? Uh, a lot of things that were said here a few minutes ago, as I'm thinking about it, the word transparency comes to my mind. But Ms. Bembry, you clearly articulate everywhere this budget book was posted and how you could have actually accessed this budget book. Second, let me just say this. There comes a time when the budget does end. As we sit here today, revenues are still coming in in different categories, but there's somewhere that the budget must end so we can go into the new budget year. So you, you don't expect to have a completed budget book on the day that you have the budget hearing. It may come. It's been my experience, you may get that book two, three weeks later. Because you have, you have not had an opportunity to, to access all the funds. And I'm gonna say one more thing and I'm gonna go to Mr. Reeves. If a person is going to not go on a budget because he did not like how we spent money on a legal department. That we, you'll wonder if it's spent too much than what we are seeing. I'm gonna say this. Just think about what would have happened. How much we would have spent if we continued to practice our legal department before we got our own. Answer that question. Let's make a comparison. So I just want to make those before you go to Mr. Reeves. And Mr. Reeves, thank you for allowing me to hold up for, for a minute, but go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, no problem. I, I was going to just say, uh, Ms. Bembry, thank you to your staff for providing us with a balanced budget. Um, we just have to heat some things and to, uh, tighten up our belt and to get the maximum achievable outcome for our constituency. And to the facility to go, GMA has the facility, uh, downtown for the uses. I, I don't know. I do agree with Councilmember Willis on, uh, on the extended retreat before the, something like a date that the public can come to, it's a brand-new facility. Um, and that's where we get all our education from, and so this is wealth knowledge, and I just say that I would like to utilize that space particularly to, because it's convenient for the public to get there as well if they so choose to attend. So that's all, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Ms. Willis, your second go around.
Uh, so I, I just want to, um, add upon a clarification. Each of us get council budgets. And since I have been sitting in my seat, um, and, and to the constituent who posed the concern, um, I'm not sure why their loved ones isn't getting my mail, but I will reach out to that individual. Um, I allocate a certain amount of money to mail my constituents every quarter. And there's no one stopping council members from doing that. Um, and by mailing your constituents every quarter, you can personalize your your quarterly letters specific to the district that your constituents live in. So, um, you know, we don't have to put that onus totally on our communications department. If we, you know, become more physically responsible and instead of buying two thousand dollars worth of ice cream, we can send our department, we can send out, we can mail our, um, constituents important information that is, uh, more, uh, more, uh, beneficial to them. As far as the legal department, yes, we never did allocate five hundred thousand dollars for the legal department. Yes, we did pay five hundred thousand dollars for basic costs of legal, but every time we had to litigate or every time something was had to be filed on behalf of the city, that was additional cost that the city has had to pay. So setting up our own legal department overall is, uh, was more efficient. And it does come out cheaper in the long run. And if we don't want to have to pay two attorneys, then stop. Uh, some, some people need to stop insisting on using the old attorney. We got a whole legal department that can handle the cases that we need to handle. But the reason we are paying two attorneys, let's be, let's be truthful about it. We're paying the other attorney because some people just don't want to let go. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna have Mr. Kame on his second go around and I would, at that time, I would like to, uh, entertain a motion.
Okay, um, first I want to say, well, uh, Councilwoman Willis, to, to respond to that, thank you for um, endorsing me doing newsletters. I, I, I thought that you didn't enjoy the newsletters, but I will, I will continue to send them out. Uh, but that, because that is something that I do do for my district. Um, the the issue of the attorney and why we're paying them and why we're not, Mr. Hyman, um, is, is the Venture Denmark, is Amelia Walker and the Venture Denmark firm, are they handling any litigation? Because that's not something that we would assign them to do. Are they, are they currently still handling any litigation?
They should not be unless it's something that was a holdover. And two, um, there are situations based on the council's guidance that for whatever reason they needed to finalize something, maybe in that situation, but the primary bulk of the council's requests in terms of legislation or litigation has been handled in-house.
Okay, and so
if there was, if there was some need by the council that, um, I deem that the former city attorney, any outside council handler, it was within my purview to contact them. But other than that, that's the extent of it.
Okay, so, so how many, you said unless it's pending litigation, how many cases of pending litigation do we still have?
I have a case report that's by the council and I can resubmit that if you like.
Uh, could you just ballpark it for me?
Uh, I really can't without pulling the litigation report, but I, but it is, it's more than ten, there, there, there's litigation that's out there that I can just, I can get that to you.
Um, so, so, but, but now you, going forward, you have the adequate staff to handle all of our legal needs from here going out. We, we will not need to use Venture Denmark ever again.
I would never, I'd never say never ever to anything, but I can tell you this, that we have adequate staff. We've been using our staff. And say, for example, if there's some specialized request that doesn't lie within here, then uh, I would take suggestions as to law firms that could specialize in that. For example, there may be bond work that's needed. Uh, the city may say, okay, reach out to attorneys that may do bond work.
Okay, um, that's, that, that's understandable. So you're, you're the department head. How many, how many staff do we have now?
I have two attorneys in paralegal.
Okay, what's our total staff budget?
Our total staff budget without me, and I would defer to Ms. Bembry, uh, on the exact numbers.
It's in the budget book.
And I think I have the floor. I'm asking the department head if you could just ballpark it. I mean, you're the, what, what's the total?
But, but I wouldn't want to ballpark without going with the numbers because I, my budget was submitted and reconciled through finance.
Okay, that's fine.
Five positions in legal.
Okay, can you ballpark what that, what we're paying for those five positions?
The total personnel cost for fiscal year twenty-two is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, I mean, because we paid six seventy-two, um, to Venture Denmark, so that seems about that, that seems about even. I, I just wish we had the rest of the, um, the, the details. I do want to say it is it, it, I, I asked at the, at the beginning of this process, which was several weeks ago, for this information. So this isn't like a, I didn't pop up and ask this request, and considering, uh, the amount of consternation this, this caused, not only us as a council, um, hopefully, you know, we're, we're considered as a group of people who, who want to have better relations. But not only us as a council, but at, across the city, right? People were, were upset about this. It's just, it, it, it's troubling to me that like, that we, that we wouldn't, that we wouldn't have that, um. But I do, but I, I do want to thank you. I think that the, you have done a great job presenting the, the top-level numbers that those, that, that basic level of detail, I think, especially for our constituents. We never really had that. We never had it graphically, uh, represented in, in, in that way. So I do want to say, um, thank you so much for that. And again, to our amazing Communications Department, I know that you're going to continue once we have all of these final details, that, that you will continue, um, getting them out. Um, and as soon as you do, they will be in my newsletter. Thank you. South Fulton forever.
Thank you so much. Let me make an attempt to get back on track and ask, uh, uh, for, uh, the fact that I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we approve, uh, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty proposed budget.
There a second?
Sure move.
All right, the property moved, all right, the property moved to second. Uh, any further discussion, I'll allow some, but I think we've had a very good discussion over the last thirty minutes.
Hearing none, let's vote please.
Roll call vote to approve the FY twenty-two proposed budget ordinance. Thank you, Councilmember Ral, Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Abstain. I'm abstaining because, um, I'm conflicted about moving eight point two million from the fund balance to capital.
Thank you, man. Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Reeves.
Hi.
Councilmember Khalid.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
That item was approved.
Thank you so much. Uh, I think as the, our last agenda is a, is the right.
I move that we adjourn.
All right, probably move the second, any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call to adjourn, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Mayor Prochim Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard.
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves.
Hi.
Councilmember Khalid.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Hi.
We adjourned at six fifty-one PM. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, thanks so much.